Thank you. Welcome to the hearings meeting of the Springfield City Council. It is now 7:25. I apologize for those watching at home who were expecting the hearings meetings earlier. Budget meeting ran over time and to those petitioners who are here today, I sincerely apologize for the wait. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Madam Clerk?
Counselor Gomez?
Present.
Present. Counselor Whitfield? Can you counselors hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Whitfield? Absent. I'll come back. Counselor Davila?
Present.
Present. Counselor Fenton?
Yes, here.
Yes, here. Counselor Curran? Counselor Curran? Absent. Counselor Ramos? Present. Counselor Walsh?
Here.
Here. Counselor Williams?
Present.
Present. Counselor Allen? Absent. Counselor Letterman?
Present.
Present. Counselor Edwards?
Present.
Present. Counselor Brown?
Present.
Present. Counselor Hurst?
Present. Can we circle around and call the counselors who we missed?
Counselor Whitfield? Absent. Counselor Curran? Absent. Counselor Allen?
Present.
Thank you. Will the counselors and their guests please rise for a moment of silence? You please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, will you please call the first item on the agenda?
The first item on the agenda is a special permit for reuse of an existing structure at 1331 Elm Street.
Is there anyone present to speak to this item? The proponents, excuse me, will have 20 minutes, followed by the opponents who will have 20 minutes to speak against the petition, followed by 15 minute rebuttal period, which we will not get to this evening. We will get to at our next regular meeting. So for the counselors that have, that were at the last meeting, what I did was we had the proponents and the opponents speak, and then we need to wait to give those who might want to respond to something that was said by the proponents or opponents an opportunity for rebuttal. And so we will give them that time in between now and our next regular meeting to submit rebuttals, either via phone or in writing to our city council chambers. And so we will not open the floor for questioning at this time. What I found in the last meeting was that we opened the floor for questions prior to the rebuttal, and then we found ourselves coming back to the next meeting and asking the very same questions. And so what we'll do is we'll have, we'll give the proponents 20 minutes, followed by the opponents, and then we will continue the hearing. So is there, Madam Clerk, can you please call item number one on the agenda, please? Oh, did we do that already? I'm sorry. It's getting late.
That's fine. It's for a special permit for the reuse of a structure on Elm Street.
Well, thank you. Is there anyone present to speak for the proponents?
Mr. Chairman, this is Michael O'Brien with Wynn Companies. I'm an executive vice president. I'll begin for the proponents.
Can you please state your address for the record?
Sure. Michael O'Brien, Executive Vice President, 1 Washington Square, Boston, Mass. 021.
And Counselor Whitfield and Counselor Curran, who I believe are both present at the moment. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Counselor?
Can you please acknowledge Counselor Whitfield and Counselor Curran, who are now present before we begin the hearing?
Very sorry, I need a moment, but here.
Here. And Counselor, who else was missing?
Curran.
Curran?
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Mike, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are pleased to be before you tonight for the city's required special permit for 3-7 Elm and 1331 Elm. The We Are Opal Real Estate represented tonight and here with you tonight, Peter Picnelli and Wynn Companies, and I'll be speaking on behalf of Wynn Companies. Both of us, this partnership are bullish on Springfield. You said that before, and we're wildly committed to make the 1331 Elm and 3-7 Elm project a reality. So great news. We're working hard and hand in glove with our funders, the agencies that we're working with, as well as the city to get our development underway, fingers crossed, in early winter 2021. This permit's important to that process, so we look forward to the discussions tonight. And I'd say so far, so great on that goal for us to be ready by early winter 2021. And you should be proud of your city team. They've been tough, fair, and really driven to get this project to go time with checks and balances along the way. That's obviously the mayor, the city council, city administration, neighborhood groups, et cetera. As our previous presentations do, this will be market rate apartments, ground floor commercial. It'll be a significant reinvestment in downtown to breathe new life into all the work that you've done so far to do just that. All this will be built by union labor via PLA on our project. And so a signature project in an unparalleled partnership. Now, there's nine different groups, nine different partners we're working with on this. Obviously, us as developer, our tax credit investors, Mass Housing, the state's premier housing agency, the Commonwealth itself, the Mass Historic Commission, and that's for the state historic tax credits, the federal tax credits, MGM, who's been a tremendous partner, the Mass Mutual, and then obviously the city that I already mentioned. So you never see this type of cross-sector partnership to make a project of this magnitude happen and a project of this complex. So I'm proud to be part of it. And with your indulgence, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have Peter Picnelli say a few words.
Yeah, hi, this is Peter Picnelli, and listen, I'm pleased to be a part of this project.
Can you please state your address for the record, please?
My address is 330 Park Drive in Springfield, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Listen, this is a great project. It's a great project for Springfield. This building's been abandoned in the core of our city for well over 30 years. My family's actually been trying to renovate this property for 25 years now, started with my dad. We are now on the one-yard line to get this done. It's a great affiliation of developers in the city and the federal government to make this happen, and we're very close to having it done. We need this amendment to complete the process. It's a rare opportunity for Springfield to finally get this building completed. I don't believe Springfield can truly see its potential and its renaissance with having a building in our main core abandoned as it currently is. It's a great opportunity for the city, and we're looking forward to bringing it over the goal line. That can happen very, very, very soon.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present to speak on behalf?
Mr. Chairman, just quickly, as proponents on the call with us tonight is also my senior vice president of Development, Adam Stein, here to listen in and answer questions. He won't be speaking tonight. We also have our attorney, Paul Malik, who's joined us. So that's our team on the call tonight. In addition, we'll just have Rob Levek, who's our engineer consultant on it, just quickly overview the application. That's before you, so I'll turn it to Rob Levek.
Thank you to the president. Thank you for your time, President and counselors. I'm Rob Levek from R. Levek Associates. My address is 64 Blueberry Ridge, Westfield, Massachusetts. If it pleases the council, what I'd like to do is share my screen. I tried briefly earlier, and I think I need to be unlocked. If somebody could just allow that.
Brendan, can we unlock the screen, please? Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor. So what I'm showing you before you this evening is, it's a little bit difficult to, you know what I'm going to do, two seconds. I'm going to look at the, hopefully you're looking at that aerial view right now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so just to give everybody some perspective, this is Main Street right here. This is the former building, I believe this is an older aerial, or this is the MGM. State Street is here. This is the courthouse. The subject property is here. It's an, oops, sorry. It's an L-shaped building, right at the Court Square Green. We have Court Square Avenue that runs to here, and then we have Elm Street. So our project pretty much encompasses this L-shaped building here. There's also another little building.
So I can't see the cursor. I don't know if anyone else can see the cursor, if you're moving the cursor.
Okay.
And if we can enlarge it just a bit, if at all possible, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, I apologize for that.
That's all right.
Can you see the cursor now? No? Okay, sure. So I'm just going to explain it. Building that you see on your screen, that is the subject building, and then there's another smaller building that you see where it says Rank and Grow, directly adjacent to that Rank and Grow label. And then you have Court Square. I'm going to go back to my plan. This is showing the same. If everybody can see this, the L-shaped kind of orangey-yellow building, that is the same L-shaped building that I was talking about. That is 13 through 31 Elm Street. And just to the north of that, there is the other smaller Elm Street building there. That's, I think, 3 through 7 Elm. So to give you a little bit of understanding of the program, the smaller building to the north that houses four proposed apartment buildings. The building to the south, the L-shaped building, is 70 apartment buildings. So 2 through 6 are the floors on the bigger building. The first floor, as Mike had mentioned, is commercial, going to be a commercial use. The idea is to have commercial and some space for the tenants on the first story, and then the upper stories would be all residential apartments. Mike has the breakdown. If there's any specifics on the breakdown for bedrooms. As far as the internal or courtyard within the site, if you look behind, just inside the L, just to the north of the existing building there, we have 43 parking spaces proposed and an entrance at the rear of the building, and there are a number of entrances throughout the rear and the front of the building. We'll be also proposing angled parking on Elm Street, kind of the historic nature of Elm Street. We have some great photographs showing some parking along Elm, and as you're aware, that we were always parking along Elm. That will require some nice streetscaping and some landscape improvements that we'll be working out with Chris Signoli in his office at the City Engineering Department. We've also spoken with Springfield Water and Sewer at length regarding utilities to the site. Our water and sewer will be going out into Elm and to existing, there's an existing water line out there, and there is an existing city sewer. And then our drainage will be handled under the proposed parking lot and with an overflow to State Street. So pretty straightforward as far as utilities go. As far as parking goes, not only do we have the internal or onsite parking, as well as the parking along Court Square Avenue that will be available, but there also is an agreement with MGM to secure approximately 100 parking spaces from them with a long-term lease. So you can feel comfortable that the site will function as designed. We've looked at this closely with Wynn's development team, specific to operations, trash removal, those type of very specific details. As you can imagine, to have a project like this successful, all of those details need to be handled. So their development team and their operations team have looked at this plan very closely. With that, I'd like to turn it back over to Mike, and then once Mike is done, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have on specifics.
Thank you, Rob. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our broad overview of the special permit, which is formally before this board. We obviously, as was mentioned by Rob and Peter, we're here to answer any questions, whether it be tonight or at a later date when that might be opened up for questions. And we really look forward to that discussion and ultimately a favorable vote. It's important in the sequence of events for us to continue on our path to be ready to take, transfer the building from the city in and around the December timeline, December 2020, and then begin our work likely sometime right after the first of the year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present to speak on behalf of the proponents? Seeing none. Is there anyone present to, yes, there is. Chris, yes?
Chris Moskell from the redevelopment authority. Thank you, sir, for, just briefly, the board actually asked me to speak on their behalf this evening to thank, first of all, the city council for their many years of support, but in particular Counselor Fenton, who has been alongside us all through this whole process, which has gone on for more than 10 years. But we're finally, as Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Picnelli stated, we are at the point where we are close to the finish line and ready to begin this process of construction later this year or the very beginning of 2021. We respectfully asked the city council to issue the special permit, and we again thank all of you for all of your support along the way, and we hope that very soon we'll all get to meet for the commencement of construction at the project. So that's all I really had to put on record. Thank you.
Thank you. If there is no one else wishing to speak on behalf of the proponents, I see my colleagues have their hands up in the queue. If we could just remove the...
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone present to speak on behalf of the opponents? Seeing none. If there is no one present to speak on behalf of the opponents, then what I think I will allow my colleagues to do is to ask questions or make comments because it is fresh at the moment. I know when we reconvene next week, it probably will not be as fresh. I think the problem, and I will caution my colleagues, what occurred the last time was we were asking the same questions at our next meeting. And so the objective is to try and present that, I mean, prevent that if at all possible. So with that being said, since there is no one to speak on behalf of the proponents, I will open it up for questions, and hopefully that will limit the questions that we have at our following meeting. Counselor Brown, I know you've had your hands raised, followed by Counselor Fenton, and then Counselor Gomez. Counselor Brown? All right. Counselor Fenton?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, very well said. Thank you for clarifying that about the hearings. This project has been one that has evaded us for a very long time, as...
Counselor Brown, we were waiting on you. Do you mind waiting until after Counselor Fenton, since he started, and we'll call on you next, sir? We actually called on you, and we're waiting for a bit, but I'll get to you right after Counselor Fenton. Sorry about that.
Yes, of course, Counselor Fenton is one of my most favorite counselors.
Thank you very much for yielding, Counselor Brown. So Mr. Picnelli indicated earlier that this has been a project that the city and the business community have identified as absolutely critical to the downtown core, really for the last 40-plus years. And so I want to thank him. I want to thank Mr. O'Brien and their entire team, Mr. Crowley, Chris Moskell, Tom Moore, everybody at the SRA, specifically Armando Feliciano, the chairperson, Fiore Vercetti, Dot Lordy, all the other members who have worked with us collaboratively over the many years that we've been working on this site, and it long predates my involvement. As Peter said, his father identified this as an absolutely critical site for the city many, many decades ago. And so I think this is a great moment to be at this point where we can have plans and drawings that are here for our consideration and approval, and it's a pretty feel-good story. This is the site that we feel will result in the spin-off from the casino that we all wanted when we approved the referendum, you know, going on five years ago now. And so with this site secured and stabilized with these local and incredibly professional and experienced developers, I think we'll be in a position to really connect the Union Street, State Street, center of downtown, all the way down to Worthington and Lyman. And so I can't say enough about the importance of this project. I'm thrilled to have this team here to present it, and I want to thank them for continuing to be willing to work with me on this project, and you, Mr. President, for trusting me to see this committee through for another year, which I know was not an easy thing, given a lot of the delays and some of the other things going on. So you and I have been in contact, and you've held my feet to the fire about making sure this gets done as well. So I want to thank you for that patience. My only question that I would have is one I already know the answer to, but I want to illustrate it for the rest of my colleagues because I know that it'll be something they're interested in that wasn't necessarily discussed in a great level of detail earlier for us. And that's regarding the parking. Michael or Rob, maybe you can speak a little bit more to the 22 spaces. And Rob, I know you weren't on that conference call we had, I think it was last week, but maybe speak a little bit about what other parking availability the project anticipates to use and pursue in the area.
Mr. Chairman, to the council, I'll respond to that. Rob, you can back me up for any detail I might miss. To the reality of the application before you, in the court... Thank you. 100 parking spaces through long-term lease with MGM, and that's a 50-year lease, which we believe is a fabulous asset for us to make the property successful, primarily those rentals through our residential tenants, and then working hand in glove to approximately 21 spaces on Elm Street and Court Square Ave. And the reason being is to make that retail work, some 12,000 square feet of retail between 3 to 7 Elm and 1331 Elm, we need what I'll call the lifeblood of circulation, vehicle and pedestrian. And that's going to be short-term parking available in those locations to make those boutiques, and they're going to be boutique retail, actually be successful. And so with that amount of parking for both retail and commercial, as well as residential service, primarily in the courtyard and the MGM garage, all of our analysis points to the fact that this will be successful. As we stand right now with the dependence on the automobile, those kind of numbers are required, but we've done well working with our partners to secure those and make sure that when we ultimately ribbon-cut this project, which will be in 2022, that there'll be tenants lined up and commercial and retail tenants excited about being within the space, knowing that we've got the support of available parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fenton, did you want to add anything, or?
No, that was great. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Counselor Brown, followed by Counselor Gomez.
Yes, I want to first commend my colleague, Counselor Fenton, and let him understand the admiration I have for him where I might yield. It's an honor to be with my colleagues that earned their city council position. You, Mr. President, Marcus, Tracy, Counselor Whitfield, and Counselor Fenton, you guys are amazing. And then I still would have to add that Mr. Picnelli, I remember him and the things that he's donated to the community. He's a legend. He's an icon. Peter, I thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. I need, if you guys can, if we can collaborate and meet to help some of the kids in the inner city, I want to meet with you guys. I know Adam wants to meet with you guys. I want to really, I mean, we want to have cookouts with you guys. We love you guys. I want to really, really mesh what you guys are doing in a way where it's impacted in the community even beyond this. I mean, I love you guys. I'm a new guy, and I commend you what you do, and I just want you guys, if I can, you know, after this, if we can have a change numbers, I want to know you guys. I want you guys to help the inner city of Ward 4. I know Adam wants you guys. Let's sit down. We love you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brown, Counselor Gomez, followed by Counselor Davila.
Can I comment there?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, Counselor Brown, my email's peter@peterpmbus.com. Contact me anytime. I'm going to buy all you guys hot dogs and hamburgs at the White Hunt very soon, okay?
I love you, Peter. You the man. I love you.
Counselor Gomez, followed by Counselor Davila. Counselor Gomez, you might be on mute, sir.
No, my mouse was acting up at the moment. I'm trying to deselect the mute button. I just want to really just thank, you know, my colleague, Michael Fenton, for, you know, making sure these meetings were consistent. You know, I remember going to every single one of them. I think that, you know, it was truly, you know, at a point when we thought sometimes that I didn't know how we were going to, you guys were going to bring it all together, and watching kind of the hard work and dedication over the last five years. And it is a long time coming. I have a bunch of people in my district, specifically in Ward 1 where the project is located, that has asked me already, when is the project happening? You know, it's coming online, and honestly, just to honestly be on that cusp at this moment in time, knowingly that we're, like you said, we're on the one-yard line. And, you know, I remember as a kid, I scratched your dad's Rolls Royce, and hopefully in heaven he sees me, and I said, "I'm sorry," with my Boy Scout flag. It blew Roy's Royce when we were marching to the veterans parade. And your father always gave to the community when it came to impact the lot, you know, to the Boy Scouts, sending people up to Camp Moses. And then, you know, it's interesting how there were so many partnerships. But the most interesting thing that I heard today was from Mr. Crowley, when he spoke about something that we spoke about in our newly ad hoc meeting when it came to the unions, a PLA, right? A PLA that I believe that the unions were asking us to learn how to integrate it into what we're doing with the REO. And, you know, we see it a lot on the west side of the country, and we had a very interesting conversation. And that is the most interesting, intricate part that I wanted to talk about, ask you about Mr. Crowley, on what that PLA looks like, and you guys committing to union is super big, two big thumbs up. So folks that weren't at our meeting, can you explain a little bit of what is a PLA and what does it look like for the folks at home?
Sure. So from the earliest days of our negotiations with the city, Mayor and his team were very clear that the financial participation of MGM in the project, 1331 Elm and 3-7 Elm, and the dollars that they bring to work on this project, that it all made sense for this project to go as a project labor, and have it be an all-union workforce. And as I said earlier in my remarks, the city's been tough and flare. And so we talked long and hard internally between Opal and Wynn, and we made a decision to proceed with the PLA as a gesture of great support and respect for the city. And we had to go to work to make the financials work around that decision.
You broke up just a little bit.
A PLA is all-union labor between us as developers, our selected general contractors, we haven't done that yet. We're still in the process of construction documents and the like. Our selected general contractor, we part of those negotiations. And then we'll negotiate the final details of that with the trade unions. So that'd be the tripartite would be party to that agreement. And in that agreement, it just works out the details of how we intend to run the project and what their roles and responsibilities will be, what our roles and responsibilities will be. But the council and the community can reassure that it'll be 100% union labor project.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Gomez.
That is it. That is all that I have. I just wanted to explain a little bit of what a PLA, because that is the first time that we've heard those words here in a committee meeting, which some of us kind of know what it is. But I wanted to explain a little bit of the acronym, because this is the first time we've heard here at a meeting what a PLA is. So I just want to thank you. You have, we have done something new and talked about something different. It's referenced what a PLA is, because we did a lot of conversing of that in that ad hoc meeting of what a PLA was and how San Francisco was doing it. But now it has came to the city of Springfield. So, Mr. Crowley, and your company and your partners, thank you for really negotiating that and making that possible to have union labor. So thank you so much. I'm done.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez, Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you to the team for presenting on this property. I just have some brief questions if I may, but before I post my questions, I want to say that I feel that the part of the Springfield history is coming back to life. Those building there, it's a good building. It's a historic building. It's a beautiful building. And so I'm happy to see that. I'm even more thrilled to hear the words PLA, the Project Labor Dream, as Counselor Gomez stated. My compliments to you for doing that and committing to the PLA. But let me start there with the PLA, one of my first questions. What, how many jobs do you think is going to be created in the construction process? And then how many jobs can we expect thereafter that this property is going to create?
I would say on the construction site, you know, over the course of the project, it'd probably be somewhere between 175 and 200 construction jobs. And some days it'll be much more busy. Everything will be done COVID-safe, depending on where we're at come January of next year. But it'll ramp up at times and there'll be many more workforce on the site than some days might be a little quieter. But I think that's a pretty good number of what you can expect for construction jobs.
And thereafter?
And then thereafter, it'll be the commercial and retail jobs that are created. That'll be really up to the marketplace. We'd love to see lots of jobs created there between restaurant, retail and commercial. But, you know, more to come on what that will be. Our full-time staff to manage the residential portion of it would likely be somewhere upwards of approximately four people. Leasing agent, maintenance, individual property manager, and some support staff.
Very well. Now, I do believe, is this the project where I believe the city is pitching some money for this project? Or am I?
The city is doing some preparation of the building before we as owners take the building over. That may be something that Chris Moskell may want to respond to as far as the city's efforts.
Or even Tim Sheehan, I see Tim here.
Counselor, the city has been a partner along with the SRA since 2014. Every other year, we've had an engineering assessment done of the building. And thanks to the city dollars, we have been able to keep the building solid and as dry as possible. So what we're doing in this last phase of work, which you were correct in saying that the council approved $4 million. What we're doing there is we will be doing remediation of environmental hazards. We will be doing a sweep clean of the entire building so that it is clean for the buyers and the developers to come in. And last but not least, we'll be doing some structural work. So that will come up to the $4 million price tag. And that actually should be underway in the next month.
Very well. And if I may, one of the things that I would encourage you guys to do is to listen to this PLA, is to ensure that this creates jobs for the Springfield residents and for the minority community. You know, I hear in my short time here in the council, often times what happens after this stuff gets approved is that we say, "Well, we can't find people." And so I will highly encourage you to turn every stone in the city to find people to work in this great, great project for both minorities and minorities. Also, if I may, quickly, the parking itself, you mentioned it's going to be MGM, so there's going to be onsite parking?
Yes, through the chairman to the counselor. There will be 42 spaces onsite in the courtyard area behind 1331 Elm and 3-7 Elm. 21 spaces created in the Elm Street, Court Square Avenue public space. And then there'll be 100 parking spaces for residential tenants of ours allocated within the MGM garage.
So where will the entry point will be for the parking? Will there be State Street, Main Street, or Elm Street?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it'll be off of State Street. There'll be no access to the parking lot from Elm Street, our parking lot, the courtyard, except for move-ins that Al Cove, on the eastern end of 1331 Elm, closest to 3-7 Elm, there's a pass will allow that to be used for when people are moving in.
And just to conclude.
Counselor Davila, I know we have some other hands raised.
Just a quick 10-second comment and conclude with this, Mr. President. I give my compliments to the entire team. I am personally looking forward how the new MGM era and the old Springfield grandiose era, they both combined together to make a spectacular area for Springfield. So my compliments to you guys, and I will be voting in favor.
Thank you, Counselor Davila, Counselor Ramos, followed by Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to, first of all, congratulate and commend the chairman of the Casino Oversight Subcommittee, Counselor Fenton, for his perseverance and his persistence in his project. I know that it wasn't easy, but thanks to your leadership on that subcommittee, we were able to do our best as a council to support this project. I also want to commend and thank Mr. Picnelli for his continued investment in the city of Springfield. Thank you for your investment. You know, I'm supporting this project for two reasons. Number one, because of the historical significance of that building to the city of Springfield. And two, because of the solid reputation of Mr. Picnelli as a developer. When you combine those two things, you have a recipe for success. So I thank you. I congratulate you, and I look forward to continuing working with you.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos, Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to unmute myself. I just want to say what exciting news it is to hear that this finally, can you make it to the, can you make the touchdown without Tom Brady? Can we make it over the?
We got Picnelli.
Yeah.
Can we get there?
Yeah, we got the whole council with us. Yeah, we'll make it.
But I just want to say that, you know, there's an awful lot of nostalgia for this site, for the many people that think Court Square is the heart of the city, for the many people that had offices there, as I've told you many times, as my husband did. But I'm excited on a personal level, because I know I had conversations with your father, Peter, and how much the development of this site meant to him. And I think it's wonderful to hear people still talking about his legacy. When you think of cheerleaders for Springfield, there was no bigger one than your father. So I'm really happy that this project is going to happen and that you're a part of it. So congratulations to all involved.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh, Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just congratulations and thanks to all the developers. And congratulations and thanks to Counselor Fenton, who saw this through all the way. I made many meetings. He made all the meetings and had 1,000 phone calls on this. So thank you to all of you who got us to this point.
All right, Counselor Whitfield, sorry.
It's okay. I would be remiss if I didn't thank my colleague, Counselor Fenton, for spearheading this. We went to a lot of meetings and I approved of it from the beginning. It's a great win for the city of Springfield. I want to thank Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Picnelli, and everyone else that's involved in the project. I don't know all the names. I don't want to miss people. But thank you all for moving this project forward. And Counselor Fenton, you did a fantastic job representing the council. So thank you very much.
Counselor, thank you, Counselor Whitfield, Counselor Williams.
And just to be very brief, again, it's moments like these that I'm happy to be a counselor where we can actually come to a meeting of minds. And something that's always, you know, butting heads. And I know in regards to the Picnelli family, you guys have, in terms of economic development in the city, have been around since I can remember. And, you know, even in working at Wayfinders, you know, you guys have done some serious work there. And even in regards to the new building, that's probably near completion now. You know what I mean? And the partnerships that you've formed with our organizations certainly have been significant. So I just want to give a shout-out to my colleague, Counselor Fenton, as well as the Picnelli family for all that you do and continue to do on behalf of our constituents and the city of Springfield. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Williams, Counselor Letterman.
Momentous and well worth the wait. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Letterman. If there are no further hands in the queue, Counselor Fenton, well done. I think you remained on this subcommittee through multiple presidential administrations, which means that you were doing a darn good job. And so we appreciate your stick-to-itiveness and perseverance and way to get the job done. I think I told you earlier, the expectations were high and I expected it to get done this year. And you said absolutely. So you certainly rose to the challenge. And for my Patriots fans, it looks like it might be Cam Newton bringing it to the end zone this year. But anyhow, well done, Counselor Fenton. Okay, if there are no further questions, then if we could have a motion to continue this. And I just want to remind counselors that we did ask a lot of questions at this meeting. And so the hope is that when this is continued and we hear the rebuttals, which it appears as though there might not be any, then we will just move to a discussion amongst the counselors briefly, and we will vote on this fairly swiftly at our next meeting. So is there a motion to continue?
So moved.
So moved.
There's a motion to continue made by Counselor Fenton, seconded by Counselor Whitfield. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on the motion to continue?
On the motion to continue the item, Counselor Gomez?
Yep.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Carron?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards? Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown? Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes, this matter will be continued until our next regular meeting on July 20th. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a special permit to operate a recycling center at 74 Randall Place.
Thank you. The proponents will have 20 minutes to speak in favor of the petition, followed by the opponents who have 20 minutes to speak against the petition. Then we will open it up for questions from the council. Then we will move to continue this item and hear it again on July 20th. Is there anyone to speak on behalf of the proponents?
Yes, I'm Armando Camerata, owner of International Automotive Parts.
You state your address for the record, please.
74 Randall Place, Springfield, Massachusetts, 01108.
Thank you.
What would you like me to say?
Tell a little bit, tell us a little bit about the project.
So briefly, we've been operating here for about seven years. We buy and sell automotive cores to rebuilders, applying for a special permit. And I think the issue that we're running to is the storage on top, which they would prefer if I use the existing driveway and switch the gate to access the containers where I store them.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on behalf of the proponents? Hearing none, is there anyone present wishing to speak on behalf of the opponents? Hearing none, we will open the floor up to the council for questions or comments. Counselor Brown?
The only question I have, did you talk to the actual ward counselor or any of the at-large counselors?
Thank you, Counselor Brown.
Yes, sir. I spoke with Mr. Davilia, Counselor Davilia, and have all his plans ready to go.
Thank you.
Springfield City Civic Association, is that who you're speaking of?
I'm just curious, because you didn't say that. I was curious. Did you talk to Mr. Counselor Davilia or any other counselors? I'm just curious. And what are their feelings behind that? This is the only thing I would want to know.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. And I think Counselor Davila has his hand raised in the queue as well. So I know he can speak to it also, but we'll let Armando respond and then we'll turn it over to Counselor Davila.
Yes, so I did have my Zoom meeting with the Forest Park Neighborhood Plan and went forward with that. Counselor Davila emailed me his plans and we're going to go forward with them.
Did that, is that sufficient, Counselor Brown? Or can we turn it over to Counselor Davila now?
Yes, that's the only thing I kind of worry about as far as different things. As long as you make sure, you know, you speak to the different representatives to let time sit down and speak with you. Whatever my colleague, Counselor Davilia, would recommend, I have 100% confidence that he would say.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Brown, Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Mr. President, Mr. Armando has been in contact with me and he has been very good with the follow-through. He's correct. He did reach out to the Forest Park Civic Association. The Forest Park Civic Association did vote to endorse the recycling department, including the petitions that are recommended by the planning department. And if Phil's here, he could probably speak to them. But some of those conditions include paving the roads, putting fences as well, and privacy fences. And so, yes, Mr. Armando has been very thorough with the follow-ups and he was endorsed by the Forest Park Civic Association.
Thank you, Counselor Davila, Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to just reiterate, maybe I missed it, on what kind of recycling are you going to be doing here, Mr. Armando? Is that your name? I apologize.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Yes. So I buy and sell automotive cores. And not everything makes it to the rebuilding phase, so it produces scrap metal, which can burn.
So you're going to be doing scrap metal there?
It's, I focus on the rebuilding industry first, but obviously the byproduct is scrap metal that we get. When I met with Phil Drami in the city, he suggested that I go forward with a special permit for a recycling center.
Okay. Next question is, do you plan on having any loud, I don't know, what kind of like, what kind of machines are you going to have on this property, on this parcel? Like, when you talk about scrap metal, I have a friend that owns a scrap model yard in Chicopee. And, you know, is it going to be like really big, you know, really big machines there to like crunch this metal down? And is it going to be like making noises? And is it going to be like making noises? The only reason I'm asking Mr. Armando is because the last time we passed a special permit, something of a recycling center, it came with the burden of it was a disruption to the residents around. And I know now during this pandemic, it's very hard for people to kind of get, be a part of these Zoom meetings. I know we do our best to try to get it out there in the notification, but that's the reason why I'm asking. Because I want to know what kind of machines are you looking, aside from the rebuilding stuff? Like, when it comes to this scrap metal, are there's going to be like, are you going to be like compacting that metal there?
So, I understand your point of view. All the neighbors and everybody on the street, we all get along great. I've never had any noise complaints. We usually start operating outside around 8:00 a.m., but most of our work is done inside. I don't actually process scrap metal, so there's no noise generated with it. I don't have any balers or shears or anything like that. Alls I have is skid steers, forklift and an excavator to load the stuff. I don't actually process the scrap metal to create any issues with neighbors or anyone.
Oh, so you actually just haul it out of there and then bring it to another scrapyard? Oh, all right, no problem. If the ward counselor, you've met with the ward counselor, you've met with the Forest Park Civic Association. I know that there has been question a little about the, so you're going to be right here on the rim of Water Shop's pond, am I right?
Yes, sir.
So, that's a body of water. Is there anything that you had to do along that shore or anything environmentally? You don't see yourself, obviously, you know, cleaning that up or putting some kind of a barrier between the lake and the habitat of the lake towards your parcel?
So, there's already an existing curb. I don't do anything near the lake or have anything stored near there. So, there should be no issues with that. I've been operating here for seven years and never had an issue with it. So, it's business as usual.
All right, no problem. I appreciate your candidness to answer the questions. Thank you so much, Mr. Armando.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez, Counselor Davila. Looks like you are the last counselor with their hand raising the queue.
Yes, Mr. President, Counselor Gomez kind of hinted a question that I was going to go to. As I mentioned, the Forest Park Civic Association did endorse this project. I do have one question and that's regarding to the body of water of the lake pond there, pond lake. The, I have no doubts that, I do believe that Mr. Camerata has been there for three years now. But just to ensure that the lake is protected, if Phil's on the line, I'm just wondering, is that $200, the recommendation number, the last one, number 14 or 15, is that violation 200, the highest we can go?
Is that a question from me?
Either to Mr. Drami or I believe to Tony Moore is on the line.
Tony Moore, do you want to speak to that? Or Phil, for that matter.
As I, this is Phil. As I mentioned to Counselor Davila this morning, that fine is something I get from the building department. I really can't speak to whether it can be raised or not. I know at one point it was $50 and then I was notified by the building department probably three or four years ago to raise it to 200. I don't know if that's a code that limits the amount of fines. So, I really can't answer that question. That's just kind of standard language that I add to special permits.
Tony Moore, can you speak to that?
Yeah, I think, just to speak to Phil's point, I think that's accurate. I think it originates in the building department. That being said, I don't think that the fee is specific for special permits. As the council is aware, you have pretty broad authority to put in conditions for special permits. So, if the council felt like it wanted to make the, you know, the penalty, for lack of a better word, or the fee, or the fine, excuse me, you know, $200 or $300 or you need to increase it, I think you had the discretion to do that. I think at a certain point, you know, we'd have to get into a different discussion if that were to get to a level where, you know, we have to look into whether we could do that under a master's general law. But I think as long as you stayed, you know, within the, you know, $200 range, $300 being the civil cap under mass law, we'd probably be totally fine. The council wanted me to do some legal research, I'd be happy to do that and kind of delve into how much you could actually put onto a special permit. Because in my years of kind of observing these hearings, I've really, you know, I've never seen a special permit granted that had, say, like thousands of dollars attached to it as a fine if it wasn't, there was no compliance. You know, I've never seen one of those. So, if council wanted me to, I could certainly look into it. But my guess would be that, you know, this originates in the building department as a fine that they put in place for operation without permitting to that extent and that it just carries over to special permit requests as a penalty for, you know, for operating without permit.
Yeah, that's why I tried to more if you would, only because I, although I think it's going to be a problem, it's not going to be a problem. However, I do think that the council needs to be clear, at least in my perspective as a counselor, that we're very serious about protecting our environment and I would love to get your opinion.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Not at the point where we would make any amendments to the conditions and we won't get there this evening. It sounds like that's something that can take place after this meeting and before the next meeting. So, I will let you all follow up on the questions from the council. Can we have a motion to continue this hearing until July 20th?
So moved.
There's a motion made by Counselor Gomez. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Davila. Madam Clerk, before you call the roll, I just want to remind the council that we have asked a number of questions and so, just to be mindful when we reconvene, that we're getting our questions out now. So, I just want to reiterate that. Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On the motion to continue the item, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Counselor Karen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos. Counselor Ramos. Absent, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Pass. The hearing is continued and Counselor Ramos, you might want to log out and log back in if you have any issues. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is for a zone change at the property known as North Side Bull Shoal.
Counselor Letterman.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have to recuse myself from items one and two as my wife is employed by a subsidiary of the company. And with that being said, I mean, certainly I'll leave and come back, but I was wondering if the council might be willing to take item three so that we can dispose of that and then I will recuse myself for the rest of the meeting. But certainly, if the council wishes for me to leave and come back, I can accommodate that. I just would need someone to text me when it is time to return.
So, are you making a motion to take an item out of order, Counselor Letterman?
I think that logistically that may make sense. So, if there's no objection, I would move to take item three out of order.
So, if there is no objection, then we'll take item number three out of order. Counselor Fenton, I do see a hand raised, sir. Is that an objection?
No, it's not. I have to recuse myself too.
Okay, so we have Counselor Fenton and Counselor Letterman recusing themselves from items two and two, I'm sorry, one and two. So, taking item number three out of order would be beneficial to both Counselor Fenton and Counselor Letterman. If there are no objections, Madam Clerk, can you call item number three? Under the zone change.
Item number three is a zone change to the property known as 11 Merwin Street from Residence B to Business A.
Is there anyone present to speak on behalf of the proponents? We'll have 20 minutes, followed by the opponents, who will also have 20 minutes.
Yes, Mr. President and counselors, I'm Rob Levec from our Levec Associates. My address is 64 Blueberry Ridge in Westfield, representing the project for the proposed change at 11 Merwin Street. A little bit of background, the owner-operator of the mobile is the proponent. I believe Zahur is on with us this evening. I don't know if I see him in the mix here, but he's the owner-operator of the mobile directly adjacent to the subject property. It's broken into two zones right now. It's Business A and the other part is residential. So, what we're looking to do is kind of round out that corner. I do have a phone. You'd like to share it. I believe I am disabled, so I'm not going to share it quite yet. But with that, there's basically a split, requesting to zone the entire subject property to the east, to the eastern property boundary. And I believe, no, still can't share my screen.
Right, then can you allow Mr. Levec to share his screen, please?
Thank you very much, President. So, Mr. President and counselors, this, oh, no, that's the wrong one. You're with me?
Can we please make sure to mute our devices as well, please, as I'm hearing some background noise? They're not speaking.
So, this is in fact the mobile station here, just on the south side of my plan. The subject property that we're talking about is right over here. And within the confines of what I'm sketching here, the subject property, you'll see that there's a zone line that splits the property. Or the west side is Business A, the right side is Residential B and we're requesting to rezone that all the way to the property line so that we can pursue a commercial development that would incorporate the mobile into a nice convenience store with the proper, you know, functioning of site, onsite vehicles and traffic circulation, as well as pedestrian as well. So, that's the request and I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing, anyone else wishing to speak on behalf of the proponents? Seeing none, is there anyone present wishing to speak on behalf of the opponents? Seeing or hearing none, I will open it up to the council for questions if they have them. Counselor Gomez, followed by Counselor Fenton.
Yes, so this is a property that I think we heard there was a transfer of deed and we had to unite them a couple of months back. The gentleman, which we, he's known as Sonny, which Sonny has been a friend to the community for quite a long time. He used to own the convenience store that used to be inside of the bus terminal. He, actually, he was, he was going to acquire the sickle that burned on Boston Road, like the day before he was supposed to sign and lost that property. But he's also made a significant investment in Ward Two, right up around in Morro, where there's a building site there that he owns another piece of property and then, you know, a store. And then he's opened up another small little, well, he bought another bodega on Franklin Street that used to be owned by a gentleman that used to be named Felix. So, he's been, you know, investing in a lot of the community in Springfield. He's someone that is, you know, very extraordinary, giving people opportunity. But I think this project highlights what, you know, we had an issue where we lost a community member down at the mobile. And it kind of started with the conversation on, you know, the lighting of that area there at Mobile Street. And Sonny came in and became a new owner and changed up a lot of things there at the mobile already. When it came to the cameras, the cameras were offline, lighting, cleaning the area, widening and making the pumps all accessible. But then he had this idea and he worked with, I think it was his other partner in this, I think is Mr. Flores. And Mr. Flores is no, he's a friend to all of us at the same time, his partner. And they acquired a piece of land, which was a vacated three-family. They tore it down and the new plan, they've, I've been invited to the neighborhood board, the neighborhood subcommittee, the New North Citizens Council Neighborhood Board. We've been meeting with this gentleman for, I think, about a year now. And what they're proposing is something larger, something on the grounds of, it's not pride, so I don't want to throw that in there, but it's like the other project that came before us at the corner of Taylor and also Armory Street that it was a complete reface of, you know, that gas station that was there, right there, that was behind the Worthington Heights neighborhood that has become a great safety net that has, you know, a restaurant inside of it and is just like a great add to that community. And that this Sonny hires from within the community. He is definitely someone that understands the significance of the economic development of bringing that stuff to whatever community he's in. So, I plan on supporting this next time around. But just to give a little bit of context, that Sonny is a hands-on guy. Probably that's the reason why the gentleman is here representing him. He couldn't be here because he's like the, like a lot of these business owners, they're hands-on and they're probably working at the moment. So, for the most part, I just encourage my colleagues next time around. If we don't have any questions that, you know, we can probably follow up with the petitioner. But for the most part, I plan on supporting this and this is just part of the plan to make sure we can close out what the neighborhood has partnered with Sonny and Mr. Herbie Flores.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez, Counselor Fenton. Got her.
Counselor Fenton, we can't...
I can't hear you, Counselor Fenton. I don't know if you're muted.
I can hear you now.
Can you hear me now? Well, I have to plug my iPad in. I got to reach it across because the power dies after so long a time. But what I'm saying is, thank you to Counselor Gomez for his hard work on it. Really excited to see this going forward, happy to support it. Rob, I just had a couple of questions. Does this, this owner has site control over all three parcels between Dover and Merwin?
Yes, sir. Yep.
It's just a little confusing because the GIS says somebody has a different address, but it looks like they're all the same. And that building that was there was torn down, is that right?
That is correct.
All right. Well, I suppose it's not really my business, but it says it was built in 1911, so.
I do, yeah, if through the president, I do know that, I did check on that and I believe they have all the requisite permits in place. We kind of came on after that, but I could certainly articulate those if you'd like to see those.
Yeah, that'd be great. If you could just send what you did for demo delay.
Sure.
And then, okay, so and then the only other thing is, I think I saw a couple of weeks ago that there was a notice to the planning board that this site is being, the mobile is requesting a drive-through permit. Is that correct? Can you talk to us about that?
That's correct. So, the master plan for the subject properties is to create a convenience store that would allow also circulation to run around the east side. Or if you were looking at my plan, I'll go to my plan again here for a second. So, around, so if you're, if you can see my cursor, I'm not sure if you can, but...
Yeah, we can.
Okay, existing building there. The idea is that there would be a C-store, a convenience store, kind of somewhat L-shaped is what is being planned. And then there would be the opportunity to drive around the backside of that and have a drive-through. It actually works quite well and we have all the requisite parking. So, that's the general concept. Obviously, that is site plan approval, special permit that would need to go before the council, which is yet to be scheduled. But that would be our next, our next approach to the council.
Great. Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor Gomez and the New North Citizens Council. Look forward to supporting. Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Councillor Gomez and the New North Citizens Council. Look forward to supporting you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Finn, Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. President. This looks like an interesting project and something that is going to enhance the neighborhood. But I do have some, a brief question, if I may. With regards to this drive-through that Counselor Finn was talking, is that going to be for the convenience store or is that, is it for the convenience store or is that also going to be for the actual gas station?
Through the President, yes, there's an opportunity actually for them to have a tenant. The convenience store itself does not take up all of the L-shaped building that I was speaking of. So there is an opportunity for a small tenant, convenience-style tenant, fast casual type of tenant that would use the drive-through. So plenty of stacking spaces, and I apologize, I don't have the plan before you this evening. I know it's not really the subject matter for tonight. So we will certainly, we certainly will have that before you soon. Soon everything goes okay. But that said, yes, there's the opportunity for a tenant that would have a drive-through access.
So the gas station is going to stay where it is and there's going to be a different tenant with a drive-through?
The gas station will stay where it is. The small convenience store currently under the canopy will be brought out, would actually be demolished. And then the new building that will be L-shaped along the east edge, or roughly along the east edge, will have two tenant spaces, one for Sonny, for his convenience store, and then also a tenant space for a drive-through use.
And would you be able to speak on the traffic pattern? Because I know this is a very, very congested area.
Yeah, we certainly will. I, you know, obviously, we've looked at the traffic patterns in the area. We also just recently redeveloped the Dunkin' Donuts directly adjacent to this site, so we're pretty familiar with what the traffic patterns are. I certainly would have that better prepared for the site plan, if that's okay, if possible to punt that down the road. We would certainly be prepared to discuss that prior to or during the site plan process.
Very well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Davila, Counselor Letterman, followed by Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rob, could you just point out something on the site plan? What building is Counselor, or on the graphic, what building is Counselor Finn talking about that was demolished?
It was demolished at the time of our site plan, but there was a building over with fronted on Merwin Street over here. Multi-family building that was demolished.
So that's gone now?
That is correct.
So for the property that, the property that it does abut, do you guys have the proper buffering in between where any parking or drive-through facility will be to try to just separate that as much, because there is residential along Merwin Street there?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. We've taken it into consideration in our planning. I believe we meet all the required zoning setbacks for parking, bituminous surfaces, that type of thing, landscaping.
All right.
It works, believe it or not, it works out pretty well with us rounding out these properties. It really works out well.
Yeah, I've seen some good examples of it done recently. I just wanted to make sure we were aware. I mean, obviously, people are living there, so we just want them to be protected, you know, subject to any increased noise and things like that.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Counselor Brown.
Yes, I just have a question as far as how intense have you worked with the Yaskel Ward Council project? And have you worked with Counselor Gomez as far as his position?
Through the President?
Yes.
I do believe, I can't speak to all of the details. Mostly most of that. I do believe they had a very specific meeting or multiple meetings with the New North Citizens Council. And I do believe they got a unanimous letter from the council, which I could certainly share. I can get my hands on that chair. I'm not specific, I don't have any specific detail on the communications directly with the Ward Council, so I apologize.
Oh, yeah, no, I commend you on your efforts. It's just a lot of times I want to make sure that when we do some of these things, there's, you know, just certain people who we contact and make sure have one hundred percent confidence in my colleagues. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. If there are no further questions in the queue, can we have a motion?
Motion.
To continue this item?
Motion to continue. So moved.
There's a motion to continue made by Counselor Gomez. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Whitfield. Madam Clerk, I just want to reiterate to councillors that we have asked a number of questions. So as we prepare for our next meeting, if we could just be mindful of that, it'd be great. We appreciate it. Madam Clerk, can you please call the rule?
On the motion to continue, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Counselor Whitfield?
Yes. Yes, did you, yes?
Yeah. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk? We lose. Do not see Attorney Davis any longer. All right, we'll take, we'll take a minute recess, hopefully. Attorney Davis will be on the line shortly.
Can you hear me?
Your mic is working, sir. All right, here she, here she is. Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry, can the councillors hear me? I got kicked out of the meeting.
That's all right. We can hear you.
I apologize. Phil said yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos? Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor, Counselor, Counselor Hurst?
Yes, this item is continued until July twenty-second. Counselor Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to reiterate and ask the Clerk to mark me as recused from the next items for the aforementioned employment of my spouse by the subsidiary.
Absolutely. Can we please mark Counselor Letterman as well as Counselor Fenton as recused from the next two items? Counselor Fenton?
Yep, that's same. My spouse works for Mass Mutual, so I'm going to recuse.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a zone change at the property known as North Side Buscholtz from Residence B to Commercial P.
Thank you. Is anyone present to speak to this item?
Mr. President, Councillors, my name is John Furman. I'm the Director of Land Development for VHB. Our address is One Federal Street in Springfield.
Thank you. You have twenty minutes to speak on behalf of the proponents, followed by twenty minutes from those wishing to speak on behalf of the opponents. The floor is yours, Mr. Furman.
Very good. Thank you, sir. With me tonight are members of Mass Mutual, Eric Weinstein, Dominic Iano, John Anderson, and Rick Smith, and we'll here to answer questions. If I could share my screen, I have some graphics that would highlight the petition.
Thank you. Brendan, can we please give Mr. Furman access to share his screen? Thank you.
There we go. All right. For this first petition, it involves two streets, Providence Street and Buckholz Street. The first graphics I have here is for Providence Street. The shaded lots are the lots that we are asking for rezoning. There are a total of eight lots, and they are all currently zoned Residence B, and we're looking to rezone them to Commercial P. I'm going to flip to the next sheet. This is Buckholz Street. For this petition, there are fourteen lots. I can try and zoom up a little bit so they come in a little clearer. Basically, the, all the lots that are shown or exist off of Buckholz Street. Mass Mutual has been purchasing these lots as they become available. And they're looking to bring them eventually under one ownership with the parent parcel, which is the area all around it. Again, these lots here are all currently zoned Residence B, and we are looking to rezone them to Commercial C. The next slide or next plan shows the parking area that we wish to construct. We have to go through final design for this yet, but in general, we're looking to basically construct parking areas for all of the lots. For the lots that are remaining, there's a couple of parcels here off of Providence. We're required to have a buffer zone between them and residential. We, the buffer zone that we are providing exceeds what is required by zoning. We have an agreement with planning that as we develop this, we will submit the plans to them for review landscaping and make sure that those are acceptable. So we're working with Phil Dromy on that. The process of rezoning these lots and combining them into the one parent lot is consistent with the long-range plans that Mass Mutual has. It's also consistent with practice. They have purchased other properties surrounding the main campus and rezoned them and has extended their parking areas into that. If approved, the next step would be a petition to the Board of Public Works for the decommissioning of Buckholz Street and this portion of Providence. And for that petition, that's all we have. If there are any questions?
Thank you. Are there any que, actually, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on behalf of the proponents? Seeing none. Is there anyone wishing to speak on behalf of the opponents? Seeing none, we will now open the floor for questions. Counselor Williams.
Mr. President, thank you for the presentation. I will ask, is there going to be any type of eminent domain takings that, you know, in terms of folks that are already living on these streets?
No, the people living on the streets have long sold. There aren't even any houses left on these lots anymore. They've long been demolished. No eminent domains. Mass Mutual has standing offers to any of the abutting properties that as they come up for sale or the people living there wish to sell the homes, they know that they can contact Mass Mutual and work out an agreement with them.
Right, and can I just ask a question in regards to the need? So, of course, additional parking means additional employees. So does this have to do with the expansion of Mass Mutual at this site?
The master planning for the site is for the expansion and the need for increased parking. We are currently not sure of the current schedule for doing this, given the COVID-nineteen pandemic and the work-from-home orders. We're anticipating that the need for the expansion will come back very quickly. But right now, we're just kind of going through the steps to prepare for that expansion.
Great. I'll just make a final comment on this. So this perspective, I guess, parking lot would, but, or would actually be in Ward Five. And the only concern I have as it relates to this project for future development is the bottleneck that takes place on Benton. So I don't know if you've had these conversations already, but I know especially during the winter months, it can, this, this area, and I'm not sure if it's because of the flow of traffic coming out of Mass Mutual and how they're being directed, it certainly is a bottleneck. So have you discussed any plans to alleviate some of those construction issues or, you know, kind of help mitigate those issues for the residents especially that live adjacent to this?
Actually, that is a great question and glad that you had brought that up. One of the other items that VHB is doing with Mass Mutual is looking at the campus as a whole. And we are going through a repositioning of all the parking. This is just one piece of it. Part of that repositioning and that master planning for the effort for the parking area creates what we're calling a ring road around the perimeter of the campus so that all the internal traffic feeds into isolated parking areas versus kind of the free-for-all that goes on right now. Once that gets reorganized, the focus for traffic will shift to one of three main gates. One of them, which is the gate, the existing gate on State Street, which has a signalized light on it. So we have to work out all the details of this yet. The signal is going to need a little bit of work. We have to work on some of the other approaches and exits to the campus, but that is the intent, is to reorganize the traffic stream coming into and out of the campus and make it more efficient.
That's great to hear, Don. I'll certainly be happy to pass over my information, just kind of as the ears to the neighborhood around this project. You know, just to ensure that construction needs are being addressed as this rolls out. So, you know, we can certainly talk offline as this project develops, but I'm happy to hear about the improvements.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Williams. Counselor Brown, I had you in the queue. Looks like you lowered your hand. Counselor Brown.
Yes, I just wanted to ask, Don, I want to commend you for what you're doing. I definitely appreciate you. Did you have a chance to talk to Counselor Williams?
Myself personally?
You're, whoever, whoever you guys are, did you have a chance to talk to the Ward Counselor?
I would have to defer to someone from the Mass Mutual team for that, Counselor. I know that they were reaching out to the neighborhood, and they have a letter of support from the neighborhood, but I am not sure.
I don't mean to put you on, but if I may, Counselor President, Counselor Williams, did they reach out to you at all?
Um, no, they did not. No.
This is Eric Weinstein in Government Relations at Mass Mutual.
Can you please state your name and address for the record? Your address for the record, sorry.
Eric Weinstein. I live on Twenty-four Westfield Road in North Haven, Connecticut, Route Six Four Seven Three. But I work at the Mass Mutual office in Springfield. Counselor Williams, I apologize. I reached out last Wednesday. Now I have to voicemail. I'm not sure if I had any correct phone number. If I did, I'd like the opportunity to reach out again. Maybe we could connect after this meeting touch base on that, but also to something. When we're saying we did get a letter of support from Klein Point as well, supportive of these efforts. The opportunity to reconnect. Thank you. Point of order, Mr. President.
Um, give me one second. Counselor Brown, are you, are you finished, sir?
No, I'm not.
I'll come right back to you, Counselor Gomez, Counselor Brown. Go ahead, sir.
I appreciate all the effort. But I believe that sometimes the different entities have to understand what the body exists of, and there has to be certain certain ways that you conduct yourself. I might have a personal issue when it comes to even Mass Mutual because there is no football field when it comes to Putnam. So I'm not very, I'm not a happy camper when it comes to that. So I would just ask- So I would just ask if they could at least have the common courtesy to talk to the Ward Counselor, talk to the, uh, Adam, Adam Gomez. He is, I mean, we have our position. At least have the common courtesy to, to reach out to us. Very easy to do so.
So it sounds like they did reach out to the neighborhood council.
Like I said, the neighborhood council is just
Hold on, Counselor Brown.
A little bit of what the problem is.
I, I, I certainly hear your point. Uh, you've expressed it on multiple occasions this evening. I think Phil Dromey might speak to what it is that he asks from the petitioners on a regular basis. And I'm not a hundred percent sure that included in that is to speak to, um, the actual counselors individually or, um...
I'm just very, I'm disappointed with the amount of effort that a lot of these entities make when it comes to the counselors and their actual, uh, positions, where they live. I, 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 I just would ask politely, I appreciate everything you guys do with the plants that you, you plant on the side of the streets and all that. But if you can be a little bit more considerate when it comes to, when you wanna make a parking lot in our area, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Uh, Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will try to be as succinct and as quick as possible. The, so, so just so that I understand, um, Mr. John Forman, I believe. Providence Street, sir. Uh, it says here that a portion to be discontinued. So I might want to understand that half of that is going to be parking spaces and the other half is gonna be residential?
Yes, sir. That is correct. Um, the, uh, the, the portion that are, uh, it might be easier to see if I scroll up here. So this is, um, the, the actual rezoning, um, with the parking lots turned off. So this portion here would be the portion that would be discontinued.
So in relation to that, sir, uh, where are the existing residential homes that are occupied?
Let me zoom up a little bit. They're, they're shown here, but they're, they're very faded. Here's one.
Okay.
And then here's the other.
So if I understand correctly, if you could zoom out for a second, uh, if you may, Mr. Forman.
Is that enough?
Uh, that's good. So if we want to understand this correctly, you, I want to you, but Mass Mutual has bought all the properties or the boxes in gray area and the empty ones, like, uh, are, or the white ones are currently where, where residents are on Providence Street.
That is correct, sir.
So in relation to those people that are there and their homes, because you're basically taking away three quarters of the street. Are they gonna have enough street to get in and out for flowing purposes?
They, they will. Um, this one in particular is the, uh, the driveway is on this side of the house. There's their garage in back. So when they come into Providence, you can see the edge of their curb cut here.
Yeah.
So they just, they pull in this way and we're leaving this portion of the street. I believe this house, uh, has access from this side here.
Okay.
So, yeah, they, they will have, they, we will not be impacting their ability to access their properties at all. This, um, lot here on the corner is also owned by Mass Mutual and we're asking for that to be rezoned as well, but the, the street will not be discontinued because of it.
Okay. So if you could go up a little bit more, just versus what I should be, uh, where you were before, if you go up a little more onto the old next street, wait there.
Okay.
Uh, no, uh, I'll go up a little bit more if you could. Where it says 47? Going up.
Insurance.
A little, a little bit more. Just, just the box north to that where you are. Off the screen, if I could, you, what, oh? No, you just had it now. If you could drag down perhaps more and more and more. You see where it says, uh, 50? Yeah, yeah. Is that, what's that right there? That's parking spaces right now?
So this is, uh, this is, uh, the next sheet. This is, uh, uh, Buckhold's. So we were just talking about this lot right here.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
And then all those that you're looking at here are the lots that we're asking for rezoning on Buckhold.
You say all those, all those lots have been, all those houses have been demolished already?
They are. Yes, they're all gone.
Over the year? Okay. Now finally, I'm, I'm probably for another subject, but my educated guess is that, uh, those properties that will be surrounded by Providence Street. Is Providence, is Providence Street, uh, they're gonna have privacy fences?
They will. I can zoom up on our conceptual plan. We're providing a twenty-foot buffer along the side. And then, uh, on the backside here, a forty-foot buffer. We are identifying simply right now as a landscaped area, but, um, we will be working on a, a full landscape design with, uh, some, uh, vertical screening as well as, uh, low, low screening. And then the, the Mass Mutual fence will basically, uh, surround the properties. So they'll be, they'll be protected from the, from the parking areas.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Forman.
Thank you, Counselor Davila, Counselor Gomez. Counselor Gomez.
No, my bad. I just, I'm sorry, Mr. President. I had a, um, a mute issue with my mouse. I apologize. So no, um, I just wanna encourage the, the petitioner, um, not to reach out to, uh, Counselor Marcus Willie during the opens, uh, open meeting while this process is happening. One thing as a point of order that we have to be very, very careful of is that during the process, while they have filed for, have petitioned for a special permit, we cannot come, become in communication with any of these petitions. I understand that, um, Counselor, uh, um, Brown, uh, wants us to, um, you know, be as actively involved with a lot of the things that are going on in our districts, but specific to only special permits, it is, um, it is, it is an ethics issue when we're coming into communication while there's a special permit, um, being, uh, on our hearings meeting.
So Counselor, Counselor Gomez, I, I appreciate that. I think it might be a great opportunity for the attorney to advise folks on what, um, can and cannot happen, uh, if, if, uh, you'll just give me a moment. Attorney Moore, are you, are you present, Attorney Moore? Attorney Moore, can, can you be crystal clear in terms of what should and should not happen? Because this, this certainly has come up before. And it seems to me that, that we ought to get clarification, certainly for, uh, if not Counselor Gomez, then, then for the rest of the, rest of my colleagues in the, on the body.
Sure. I, I think, uh, as I, I've spoken to in the past, you know, the council's role when hearing a special permit is as a quasi-judicial body. So you're, you're beginning a hearing, you're taking in evidence that you're hearing within that hearing. And then when the hearing closes, you make a decision based on what you heard. That does not mean that going into the hearing, you know, you have to have a complete blank mind and that you can't, you know, receive information as a city counselor, you know? You, your role as a city councilor is to, to hear things that come up within your community, within your ward, within the city. Those are certain things that you're allowed to listen to. But I think to speak to Counselor Gomez's point, which is well said, there is a certain limit to that, uh, when you have active matter that's, that's scheduled before the council. So, um, in the case of a special permit request, you know, when that project gets, gets put on, you know, an agenda and, and a request is filed and it's formally before the body, it's the time for the counselors to, to take that kind of step back until the hearing takes place and then be able to kind of have the discussion after they've heard all the evidence and certainly ask questions at that time to represent, um, you know, the interests of the city and to represent the interests of, uh, you know, the, the request as it relates to the, the standards for special permits. So, uh, you know, the way to look at it is, you know, you're certainly allowed to have conversations with things going on within your ward and certainly with things going on within the city that you find, uh, are important that you'd like to know more about. But when there's a formal matter that's scheduled before the body, um, in a special permit capacity, that's the time when it's, it's, it's to postpone discussion and, and certainly to not, uh, be standing in, in, in representation of the project. But really to, to kind of be able to ask questions as an impartial person, uh, sitting in a quasi-judicial body.
Thank you, Attorney Moore. So I don't wanna deliberate on this any longer. Uh, it's nine oh five. Uh, I know Counselor Brown, uh, you have your hands raised. I think if we have any questions for Attorney Moore, we can take them offline. If we could really just focus on questions for the petitioner at this point in time, it would be greatly appreciated and then folks can have a discussion, uh, offline about what is permissible and what is not permissible. I will give you the floor, Counselor Brown, but I'm, I'm hopeful that you'll, um, certainly understand and acknowledge what I just said. But...
Yes, Counsel President. I do understand that when it comes to the actual politics of things, that it isn't a clear, uh, political science. Even when it came to me actually being sworn in, the actual attorneys and the political team had no rules, no determination. They had no idea of what to do. So I do understand sometimes we gotta win. But with that in mind, um, what I do just as far as the record, for the record, it wasn't, um, the means as far as litigating, um, on behalf of, uh, an actual colleague. It had to do more with the fact that, um, the Putnam High School was not allowed to have, um, their football, um, stadium there because of Mass Mutual. They did not allow them to have it. That is what I wanna know and want to be announced for the record.
So we'll certainly, I mean, you're on the record now. Uh, I just, I think it's important for us to, to stick to the issue at hand, but you, you, you're calm.
Well, I mean, when it comes to a lot of organizations asking for parking lots and, and they want us to help them, they have to understand that I come from, uh, they call me Coach Brown. And I understand that a lot of the young people who I represented, Mass Mutual did not allow them to build a football stadium, um, on our location in our, my area. So, um, I'm not a fan of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Uh, we definitely don't wanna get personal here. If there are no further questions, can we have a motion to continue this item until our next regular meeting?
Don't move.
The motion has been made by Counselor Allen. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Walsh. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
I'll continue in the item. Counselor Gomez? Counselor Gomez? Absent, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton, recused. Counsel Curran? Counsel Curran? Absent, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman, recused. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown? Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes. Um, Madam Clerk, this item is continued. Can you, uh, please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a zone change at East Side Clarence Street from Residence A to Commercial P.
Is there anyone present to speak to this item?
I'm John Furman, uh, Director of Land Development for VHB. Uh, our address is 1 Federal Street in Springfield. And if I could share my screen again, I can have a graphics for, uh, this petition.
Brendan, can we make that happen?
All right. Uh, what you, uh, should be seeing on your screen is a plan of, uh, similar to the, uh, previous petition of Clarence Street. There are, uh, six lots that Mass Mutual owns on Clarence Street. Uh, they are all shaded. They are currently zoned Residential A. And we are also, uh, requesting that they be rezoned to Commercial P. Uh, again, uh, the, these, uh, lots have been purchased over the years by Mass Mutual. The homes that, uh, are there have long been, uh, removed, uh, and they've been land banked right now. The intent, uh, for this rezoning is to be consistent, uh, with the restructuring of the parking areas on the Mass Mutual campus. If I could, um, slide to the next graphics, I'm gonna zoom out a little bit. Wrong runway. Oops. All right. Here is, um, the little smaller view. These are the, the lots that are shaded out, uh, the rezoned ones that we're asking for. And this one right here, currently Clarence Street comes in. Um, and if you can look in the shaded back area here, here are the entrance gates, uh, currently on, on the end of Clarence. So employees come in, go through the gates. This is unidirectional. So on the way out, they basically stage, uh, at the end of Clarence. This is just one of the access points. Um, and this is one of the main reasons for the restructuring. Uh, this is unsignalized and it takes, uh, quite a bit of stacking, uh, occurs here for people trying to get out and take this, this left turn. What you're seeing here in the darker area is part of the restructuring plan. Just off the page here, uh, which you can't just see is the existing State Street entrance, which has a signal on it. So, um, this Clarence Street portion that's remaining will no longer be used for, um, uh, Mass Mutual entrance. Uh, they'll be coming in off of here, coming down in. This gate that's here will be moved to here. And then this is that ring road concept that I had mentioned during the previous, uh, application. You can see as you come in, the parking areas will kind of all be isolated parking areas. Where you come in off the ring road and then feed into them. Again, this is consistent with, uh, the long-range plans of the campus and Mass Mutual and trying to make the traffic operations here more efficient and more streamlined and more... Uh, again, we have, uh, we presented this to the Neighborhood Committee and we have a letter of support for this. And that's, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Counselor Brown.
Yeah, um, I'm just curious, uh, how, how, how the actual people who are gonna come and park there, where they coming from? How many, do you have a percentage of Springfield to other people ratio?
Uh, I don't have that, uh, available to me right now, Counselor.
And, um, and I also, and I'm very, 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 very curious. Do you guys have any type of consideration? I know with this actual, uh, parking lot, do you guys have anything in place where it comes to the actual football field for the high school?
Uh, I don't have an answer for that, Counselor.
Can you, can you, can you, can you at least find that for me, please? Because I'm having a hard time supporting anything you guys do. If you guys cannot do that for me.
I will talk to Mass Mutual.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Brown. Uh, if there are no further questions in the queue, can we have a motion to continue this item? It's a motion to continue made by, uh, Counselor Davila. Uh, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Allen. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on the motion?
On the motion to continue. Counsel Gomez? Absent, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton, recused. Counsel Curran? Absent, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman, recused. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst?
Yes. Uh, the motion to continue, uh, this meeting passes. Madam Clerk, is there any further business before the council?
There's no further business before the council.
Seeing none, we stand adjourned until, uh, July twentieth, uh, Monday, or actually, I apologize. We stand adjourned until tomorrow.
Is that five o'clock, Mr. President?
It's at five thirty.
Five thirty.
I will see everyone tomorrow.
Good night.
Make sure I get the link, please.